Stand for pledge.
I'd only use this to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call. Jenny David.
Here.
Craig Scott. Mark Serbrook.
Raise your.
Brad Newbecker.
You're.
Ron Vaughn. Any additions or questions to the agenda?
Make the motion to accept the agendas presented.
That's worth.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say yes. Opposed? Motion carries item 3A, review of minutes. We got the March 24th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Review minutes. Make a motion to accept them as presented to board.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the March 24th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item 3B, March 24th, 2022 closed session meeting minutes.
I've reviewed those minutes. Motion to accept it.
Question. We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the March 24th, 2022 closed session meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item 3C, April 7th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I write them out. Make a motion to accept them as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the April 7th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item 4, public comment. This is a public comment on agenda matters only. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment for agenda items only in the room? Come on up, sir.
Adwords today.
Yep, it's up. Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Your name, sir?
Oh. I'm going to read this because I wrote this all out so I wouldn't lose my place.
What's your name?
Gary Christensen, and I'm a resident within one of the nine single-family planted residential subdivisions that make up the Lake Ogumaw County. I'm here again this morning to represent the large majority of homeowners that would appreciate your support for the text amendment improvements that have been put before you regarding the proper use of campers within this county. Please keep in mind that the reason you are looking at the text amendment being presented is to correct several issues that the existing ordinance has had that was written approximately 25 years ago. The demonstrated issues over the past few years include but are not limited to. Many guidelines for camper use permitted are hard to understand and are only found by examining many areas of the written ordinances. This causes a lot of misinterpretation by camper owners. The existing camper ordinances have proven to be very difficult to enforce days versus dates, causing frustration to homeowners that have legitimate concerns with violations of the ordinances, as well as your ordinance enforcement staff's ability to correct the issues. This then becomes an issue when and if our court systems need to be involved in the resolution process. A lot of hard work has been done over the course of the last 18 months with the members of the planning and zoning commissioners, your ordinance enforcement staff, as well as the input from members of the community at several open public meetings. What you have before you is the culmination of all these inputs as approved by the planning and zoning officials. The proposed text amendment improvements represent a fair, responsible, and understandable set of guidelines for camper use within our county that provide safeguards for improving the health and safety issues, such as illegal dumping of wastewater and gray water, using a camper as a permanent dwelling, keeping multiple campers on a single small residential lot for several months or years at a time without proper facilities, just to name a few glaring issues. The proposed text amendment improvements also address the concerns of homeowners regarding impacts of ordinance violations causing reduced property values and property play issues. All of these issues contribute to the financial well-being of Ogumaw County and your ability to provide needed services from your budget derived from the taxes you receive from your constituents. It is our sincere hope that you will support the hard work that has been done over the last 18 months and approve the submitted text amendment improvements as proposed. We have been extremely patient thus far as we worked our way through your process to be part of these improvements in the ordinance text before you. With or without your support today, we will continue to insist on enforcement of the zoning ordinances as they pertain to camper use and enjoyment within our community. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you all with our food for thought.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
Yes, please.
Your name?
My name is Sandra Sheroot.
Okay.
C-H. Okay, this is in regards to the rezoning of the parcel at the corner of Gerald Miller and M-55. And I know that during the discussion on Thursday's meeting, it was talked about how we did not want to have it rezoned. And I'm just saying again, as a Churchill Township full-time resident, that I would not like to see that spot zoned or rezoned from agriculture to retail. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you spell your name, just to make sure we have it correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's C-H-W-I-E-R-U-T, like in tangle.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there any other public comment on the phone? Correspondents, we're receiving, I ask correspondents from Iosco County related to support for behavioral health safety net system that has been received and filed. Item 6, action on consent calendar. Is there any of these guys? I think definitely the zoning we need to take individually. All the zoning ordinances. New business. Oh, item 7A, Mike.
Hello.
Candidate for 99th second district.
At the bottom.
Um, how do we, do we, do we do A first, or do we combine them?
J-K.
You would combine them, pick the ones that you want to combine.
Okay.
Just do them.
Hold on just one second. Which ones do you guys? Which ones?
K, L, M, N, and O. We talked about all those in great detail.
Okay.
Hey, we can add an A in there too, and then we already know what he's going to tell us. You know?
Do you guys have a problem with J through O?
Sorry, if that's good to me.
Well, make the motion and we consent calendar. Oh, new business, 7J through 7O.
Oh, gosh. Okay, so 7J, we got resolution to approve jail diversion agreement. Did you have something, Commissioner Newbecker?
J through O is fine with me.
We have a support from Commissioner Scott with support from, or a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any discussion on these? I'm going to read these very quickly, guys.
All the way.
I think they're pretty important for people to know what we're voting on. I'll read as fast as I can, Commissioner Scott. Item 7J, resolution to approve jail diversion agreement. This resolution is sponsored by the sheriff. Section 207 of the mental health code requires that each community mental health services program shall provide services designed to divert persons with serious mental illness, serious emotional disturbance, or developmental disability from possible jail incarceration when appropriate. The Sabal Valley Community Mental Health Authority proposed an agreement with the sheriff, West Branch Police Chief, Rose City Police Chief, prosecuting attorney, and 34th Circuit Court to provide services compliant with section 207. The proposed resolution supports approval of the agreement. Item 7K, resolution to approve an investment policy. This resolution is sponsored by the county treasurer. Section 5 of the Investment of Surplus Funds of Political Subdivisions Act requires a county to have a written investment policy, which at a minimum includes the purpose, scope, and objectives of the policy, including safety, diversification, and return on investment. It is a desire of Ogumaw County to invest its funds in a manner in which will provide the highest investment return with the maximum security while meeting the daily cash flow needs of the county and comply with state statutes governing the government, governing the investment of public funds. The proposed policy establishes primary objectives in priority order of the county's investment activities as safety, diversification, liquidity, return on investment. The proposed resolution supports approval of the draft policy. Item 7L, resolution to approve vaccine administration program agreement. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. During seasons when flu vaccine viruses are similar to circulating viruses, flu vaccine has been shown to reduce the risk of having to go to the doctor with flu by 40% to 60%. A 2021 study showed that among adults, flu vaccinations was associated with 26% lower risk of intensive care unit admissions and a 31% lower risk of death from flu compared to those who were unvaccinated. The proposed resolution supports making flu vaccinations available to all eligible Ogumaw County employees at a cost of $35 for each vaccine provided to eligible employees who are not covered by insurance. The vaccination clinic to be administered by Rite Aid is tentatively scheduled for October 17th, 2022. Item 7M, resolution to authorize amendment 02 to agreement to provide consulting services for proper, geez, preparation of the fiscal year 2021 cost allocation plan. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator to extend a contract with Maximus Consulting Services for preparation of the cost allocation plan for fiscal year 2021. The plan is necessary to accurately calculate and seek reimbursement for indirect costs associated with various state and federal grants. If approved, the proposed resolution would authorize an agreement with Maximus Consulting Services at a total cost not to exceed $7,000. Item 7N, resolution to approve equalization planning and zoning department vehicle purchase. This resolution is sponsored by the committee of the whole. Section 34 of the General Property Tax Act requires that the Board of Commissioners shall establish and maintain a department to survey assessments and assist the Board of Commissioners in the matter of equalization of assessments, and may employ in that department technical and clerical personnel which in its judgment are considered necessary. Section 407 of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires designation of the proper official or officials who shall administer and enforce the zoning ordinance. Because this jurisdiction land of Ogumaw County consists of 575, 575 square miles, it is necessary for equalization and zoning personnel to have access to county-owned vehicles in order to fulfill their respective obligations under the, under their respective acts. The vehicle currently designated for that purpose is no longer applicable. The billing inspector secured a quote through Michigan deal for purchase of a new vehicle that meets the needs of both departments at a total cost of $30,950. Approval of the proposed resolution will allow the purchase with funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act. Item 7O, resolution to authorize adjustments to the fiscal year 2022 Ogumaw County budget. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. On September 29th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 21-150 to approve general appropriations for fiscal year 2022 and has authorized certain amendments at that time. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires local governments to maintain a balanced budget and periodically adjust the budget to reflect revised revenue and expenditure levels. It is necessary to adjust the budget as a result of update revenue and expenditure projections, fund transfers, reappropriations, accounting, and contractual changes, errors, and emissions, and additional appropriation needs. The proposed resolution directs the county administrator to make necessary transfers to adjust revenues and expenditures to balance the fiscal year 2022 Ogumaw County general fund budget at $10,719,159. Is there any discussion on those items? Roll call vote. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Item 7A, Mike, holy, I'm sorry. Come on up, sir. Candidate for 99.
Say it a half dozen times.
Candidate for 99 district state representative. Have the floor, sir.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Mike Holley, and first of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to come in and introduce myself, although I've probably met many of you already making my rounds. I run in for state representative of our now 99th district. For those that are familiar, this past year, we went through a redistricting process through all, all our branches of government, including the county boards, I would have to assume as well. In that, we've got a new 99th district. Ogumaw County was part of the 103rd. The new 99th district is Aaronack, Ogumaw, Iosco, most of Gladwin County, except for the three most southwest townships, which would be Billings, Beaverton, Tobacco Townships, including the city of Beaverton, that's now part of Midland. And we have the four most eastern townships of Clare County, that would be Arthur, Hamilton, Franklin, and Sheridan Townships. And if that wasn't enough, we also have the three most northern townships of Bay County, which would be kind of pin counting north, the Bentley area. So in whole, it's a fairly large district. And what a house district represents is about 90 to 93,000 people, and that's what they had to come up with for that criteria. Honestly, I'm pretty happy with them keeping communities of interest. I think we all share a lot of common interest between those five and a half counties. I wish they would have did a little better job on observing the county lines to make things a little more concise, but I think they did, did a pretty good job. So that's the district I'm running for. That's the 99th district. A little about, a little bit about myself is I'm the mayor for the city of Augrey. I'm serving my second term there, where I preside over the city council, of course, that I've been elected to twice. One thing to note about those two elections is when I ran the first time, I was running against five other opponents, one being an incumbent that I won. When I ran again three years later, I was unopposed. I'm also the chair of the Aaronack County Planning Commission, and I also chair the Aaronack County Soldiers and Sailors Board. All of you here are familiar with Soldiers and Sailors. It's a company-wide division of the Veterans Administration that helps veterans and their families primarily with burial costs, grave markers, and other emergency services when they can't get help elsewhere. I'm appointed to that position because I'm a Army veteran myself. I served from 1990 to 94. That was the first Gulf War, Desert Shield, Desert Storm. Between that time, I've been a business owner for over 20 years in light manufacturing, making archery equipment, recurves, longbows, some other bow hunting accessories, as well as supplying materials to other companies such as Bear Archery, where I supplied most of the materials they built their traditional gear from, including their bow strings. I'm married with two children. I've got a son in college and a daughter that's a senior in high school this year. With that, if the board or anybody has any questions, I feel free to ask. Again, I've met many of you in my, in my travels already, but. My gosh, that was easy.
Any questions?
Oh, don't you?
No, I've heard him speak now a few different times. He's, he's made his rounds, so.
And in closing with that, I think you find that I've got a very large skill set with diverse experience makes me a well-rounded candidate and a well-rounded representative. And I do see that position as that being a representative of the people. I see that 90 to 93,000 people in this district as being my strength in Lansing, meaning keeping people informed. I think good leadership is being able to inform, influence, plan, and then execute that plan. And those 90 to 93,000 people are the key to that. I look forward to serving you in Lansing. And again, if you have any questions, you do have my card there, so I'm always open to receive the phone calls and answer questions.
What would be your number one, say you get elected into this position, what would be your, what would be your number one priority?
Well, number one priority would be, of course, getting more of a lay of a land, but it's really about bringing recognition to our rural townships and our rural communities and counties in Lansing, things that have been ignored. Many times in Lansing is us more rural communities are just that, ignored. They don't realize that we have the big city problems as well. We have drug addiction. We have homelessness. We have crime, red sheriffs. We have those issues, but we have a slew of other issues that they don't worry about. Things like gypsy moths are now spongy moths, of course, to be politically correct. We've got invasive species in our waterways, frog bit, fragmites. Closer to the Iosco area, we have to deal with things like the PFAS issues. And, and of course, big issue with rural areas is high-speed internet and reliable cellphone service. We need those things not just for entertainment, but we're going to need those for education, commerce. We're going to need that electric, or excuse me, that high-tech infrastructure to bring in new businesses. We're going to need that for education. Agriculture, a lot of our farm equipment now runs off of high-technology items. To piggyback on that, I think another issue that we're going to have, particularly in our rural areas as far as running the new industry and businesses, is our power grid. Our power grid is insufficient in many of our areas as well. So that coupled with just infrastructure in general, meaning our roads, bridges, something that, again, is ignored at the Lansing and definitely at the federal level, is what we recognize as infrastructure. We always hear, you know, roads, bridges, but also drainage and waterways are something that we should be considered as, as infrastructure in this, and you see here, excuse me, our rural areas. In the cities, drainage is typically going to be something that recognizes infrastructure because it's man-made, brick and mortar, storm sewers, things of that nature. Up here, we rely on ditches, streams, rivers, creeks, and everything getting out to the Great Lakes. So those are some of the key priorities. However, added, to just keep checking down that list is again, getting a little bit better handle on government in general, getting it reeled into being able to accomplish the task as supposed to, leaving the Americans free to do what they do, meaning having a little confidence that. And freedom.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Oh, no, thank you for allowing me to come in here and introduce myself. Thank you.
Item 7B, resolution to adopt the 2022 county equalization report. This resolution is sponsored by the Equalization Director. Pursuit to section 34 of the General Property Tax Act. The county board of commissioners in each county must meet in April each year to determine county equalized value. The equalized value of all taxable property, both real and personal, for each of the 14 townships and two cities in Ogumaw County for real property values equalized at $1,132,208,430,000, and personal properties valued equalized at $73,7,538 for a total equalized value of real and personal property at $1,205,215,968. Approval of the proposed resolution meets the county statutory requirement. Mr. Booth, you have the floor.
Thank you. This morning, we're, we do have the 2022 equalization report ready, and you know, this year, there's some pretty significant increases in value. The assessed values are 7.6% increase in the taxable values, around 5.3%. Last three years, four years, when it come before you, it's been 1%, maximum 2% on taxable value. So a significant increase, primarily driven residential sales. There's just a lot of residential sales last year, so the properties are uncapping and resetting their taxable values, which has been a great benefit. We're starting to see, last year, the commercial classes, starting investments coming back after 2020, everything, we didn't have any commercial sales. Everything was really flat. 2021, they started, and this year, there's a strong, the commercial market's starting to come back and should be increasing next year as well. And I did have a mistake in a resolution I submitted to you earlier, and I believe you read the correct figures on, on the resolution this year, the, the new resolution. We have three units this year that had factors. Every time coming before you, we've never had factors in classes. This year, there's been a lot of new data standard sets from the state tax commission that assessors have to a year or two. We also have a new reporting system called MEG that everything has to go through. And through all that, there's some confusion, and so a couple of the assessors, it changed numbers, reports were different, and so there, we ended up having to equalize four classes of property with three townships. They're not huge differences, but they're, they're factors of 1%, 2%, or like 98%. So they're, they're minor adjustments, not a huge amount.
The resolution that is on your iPads this morning is the correct, has the correct numbers, and that we were able to get that before the meeting started. I'm not sure what was read was altered yet.
I wasn't sure. I didn't look at it, but we had, like I say, I apologize, I sent that Friday, and I was reviewing everything yesterday and late yesterday, I did find an error in the city road city. So I framed it that. It was about $122,000 difference in the equalization for the county.
Yeah, these ones that I read are not correct.
Right. So the resolution that you actually have.
Is correct.
We fixed that.
Okay.
And again, I apologize for that, but one of the good things in having to submit everything in a MEG, you have to look at everything again and re-enter all the figures online, as well as just what we get out of the reports out of BSNA. And when there was a change in that class, it affected some other numbers that, when it was rounded, it did make about $122,000 mistake from what I had presented to you last week.
Questions? Commissioners?
A lot of stuff.
If the board would like, once we, we've approved this, I'll have the equalization report with all the signatures. I can resubmit that to you, email that to you, so you can. I mean, like I say, the differences were pretty slight, but I can, you can all get a copy of that when that's completed. Make a motion if we got the resolution presented. Or with the correct figures.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioner Newbecker?
No.
Roll call vote. Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Item 7C, resolution to deny zoning map amendment 01-22. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. These are the forms that you have to sign.
Okay.
You and I, breakfast, three copies on this page. Then these are the warrants for the local units. So I've got two copies of each of those. And I've got the peer review committee agreements came in from Remont, if you could sign those for me.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. This resolution is sponsored by the planning and zoning administrator. The Ogumaw County Planning Commission received a petition to rezone 1.47 acres located at the northeast corner of Gerald Miller Road and Talas Road and 55 from agricultural rural preservation to local business district to allow for retail use. At the public hearing held on March 16th, 2022, the planning commission unanimously recommended denial of the request because, one, the proposal is not consistent with the Ogumaw County master plan; two, rezoning would create an unplanned spot zone; and three, the proposal is not compatible with surrounding land uses. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed resolution supports the planning commission recommendations to deny the rezoning petition. So this vote is to deny it, correct?
Correct.
Make sure it's.
Make a motion. Seven resolutions presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Newbecker for resolution to deny zoning map amendment number 01-22. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Item 7D, resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment 01-22-8. This resolution is sponsored by the planning and zoning administrator. At the public hearing held on February 23rd, 2022, the planning commission recommended approval of a tax amendment to establish definitions for campground and efficiency dwelling unit. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed resolution supports the planning commission recommendation to approve the tax change.
I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook. Discussion. Ryan, would you like to come up? The next couple? Do you want to give a, do you want to give a brief statement on this?
Yeah, real quickly, just, just to remind everybody if you're not familiar with the process that the planning commission goes through with their amendments, text amendments, and map amendments. Once those are approved at planning commission level, they do come to commissioners for final approval. Straighten all the ordinance. This is how it reads. The county board of commissioners shall not make a change or departure from the proposed amendment as certified by the planning commission unless the proposed change or departure is first submitted to the planning commission for its advice or suggestions. The planning commission shall have 30 days from and after receipt of the proposed change or departure to send its report to the county board of commissioners. And then the rest talks about how that is, once those are approved and amended. So. So so basically, what that's saying is, planning commission has our recommendations, they bring it to you. If you were in favor of it, great. If you were not, or if it's something that doesn't get a majority vote. Then the planning commission would like to know possibly what what kind of changes would like to be done. If you have suggestions on what could be changed, then we would take those back to the planning commission and discuss those. So basically the process for it.
Do you, do you have anything to add to this item seventy?
On to seven D?
The campground.
On the campground one, no, those are just definitions. Definitions that were missing before, and the efficiency dwelling unit is obviously one of the resolutions.
Questions for Ryan on this one specifically? Commissioners? Roll call vote?
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes. Item seven E, resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash B. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator at their public hearing held on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. The Planning Commission recommended tax amendment to establish regulations for efficacy dwelling units in the general provisions chapter of the zoning ordinance. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed resolution supports the Planning Commission recommendations to approve the tax change.
Do you want to add anything to this, Ryan? Do you want to?
Quickly, I think you're all probably pretty familiar with this. This is for the efficiency dwelling units. Basically dropping that minimum square footage just required for dwelling, seven hundred and twenty-two, four hundred and square feet. And also making those four square feet dwellings, those will be permanent dwellings. They won't be. We we think at the planning commission level, one of the things that we looked at is currently right now, the cost of construction is extremely expensive. We also have individuals that have explained to us that they can't afford or new homes. This would help drop that square footage. If you, if you look at four hundred versus seven hundred and twenty square feet, that's a forty-eight thousand difference. About a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build. So it's a significant difference. It will help some affordability for people, and also it would help some of those current cabins that may be less than seven hundred and twenty square foot.
Questions for Ryan?
For the, for the, like the homes, say, in Skidway that are under that, in order for them to sell, they still have to be brought up to code, correct?
There's nothing for them that says they can't sell. Unfortunately, if they were, so if we had a five hundred square foot home, and they wanted to put a ten by ten hundred foot addition on to it, we would not be able to do that. We'd have to put, it'd have to take it up to seven hundred and twenty.
Do we have any support on this? I'll make a motion to support this. Is there any support?
Oh, you're, you're making the motion to pass it.
I am.
I'll support it.
There's a motion with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the resolution zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash B. Is there any discussion on this? I talked to my townships. I talked to the Fair Board. I talked to the village last night, and I didn't get any kickback on this whatsoever. So I I think again, I, everybody I talked to seemed to be in favor of this. Any further discussion on this?
Well, I've also met with a couple of my townships, and I, same as you, I got no, I got no kickback on this whatsoever. Actually talked to some of the builders and like Ryan stated, the the cost of everything is skyrocketed.
With housing being an issue in Oglema County, huge issue. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Jenny David? Yes. Craig Scott?
Yes.
Item seven F, resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash C. This resolution, oh, this resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator. At the, at their public hearing held on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a tax amendment to establish a minimum square footage requirements. Did I read this one?
It's real close to it all.
Holy smokes. Requirements for efficiency dwelling units in the general provisions chapter of the zoning ordinance. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed, proposed resolution supports the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the tax change. Can you explain this one?
Yeah, quickly, the the ordinance currently has a minimum requirement for dwellings outside of manufactured home parks. This amendment was to update that for the efficiency dwelling units. So the only language that's actually being added is number two. That last second here of issue dwelling units can you show up as far as living space. I believe also down in number six, just the word EDU was placed there. You shall have removed private placement on the foundation and pulling mechanisms or. I believe those are the only additions.
No, the section in the zoning.
I see it.
And it has to be added in, and it has to be voted on. Yeah, and then.
Questions on this?
It's the same as the last one, except it's just in a different spot. So I'll make a motion to to approve it as as presented.
We have a motion of Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support for Commissioner Serbuk. Is there any further discussion on this? Roll call vote?
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Jenny David? Yes. Frank Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Item seven G, resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one two two dash D. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator at their public hearing held on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the tax amendment to allow mini storage facilities in the B two general district, general business district, and B three highway business district of the zoning ordinance. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed resolution supports the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the tax change.
Simply on this one, this is more or less, more or less housekeeping for planning commission. B two general business district, we do have a few mini storage facilities already in that district. And for whatever reason, that's been left out. Probably grandfathered into the ordinance at some point in time. So we've included that in the B two general district. B three highway business district, this is more just language change. We want to make sure the language matches between uses. It currently says mini storage garages. We'd like to change it to many storage facility to match all the places.
Make a motion to pass this present.
Or?
Motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbuk to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash D. So it's it's primarily just a verbiage change. They still need to come to for approval of any, any, say, storage facilities. They still need to come to you guys for approval.
In the B two, in the B two district, that is still a special use in that. So they would still have to, yeah, it's a special use, so they still would have to go through the special use from that side.
Questions? Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
This is just, all this is is very simple changes, but by law, it has to come to the county commissioners and get a total approval. I mean, it's just, it's something like you look at this normally and say, well, why didn't it just change it? Well, the law says that it has to come to the commissioners for a final approval.
Just wanted.
Changing the word from garage to facility. You're adding in many storage facility in a B two district that's business two. I mean, this is this simple stuff here, but the law says, and this is why we, and we follow the law.
Just wanted to make sure again that they, that that somebody just can't go put up a storage facility, that they need to come to you guys for approval.
They have to, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Brad Newbecker?
Yes.
Jenny David? Yes. Frank Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash E. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator at their public hearing held on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. The Planning Commission recommended approval of a tax amendment to change the title of section two dot one zero of the zoning ordinance to replace section two dot zero one subsection C to address storage on vacant lots and to replace section two dash one zero subsection D to address storage on lots containing a dwelling unit. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed resolution supports the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the tax change. Ryan?
Yes, quickly, this is the the changes to the camping part of the ordinance that we had addressed. And part of those changes, not a whole lot of changes as far as verbiage. There are some changes, but not a ton. More or less, this was the current part of the ordinance was pretty hard to follow for for an individual that could just pick up the zoning ordinance. Even if I copied it and sent it to somebody, it was, it's very hard to follow. We've broken that down a little bit to make it easier. Storage, I think, lots and storage. Parcel. Probably the two biggest changes, or the biggest change in there is the go down to.
It was five.
One recreational vehicle may remain on a parcel from April first to November thirty, if connected to septic and well approved by the district health. Prior to this, that verbiage was two hundred and seventy days out of three hundred and sixty-five day period. I I think you all know, I've stated a few times before. Enforcement of that is different for every single camper. This would put everybody in the same boat, so to speak. Enforcement will be easier and also be fairer for everybody as well, too. Only other, I don't believe there is any other major changes. That's, that's the biggest change. Obviously, we heard in the resolution for the. Square miles of that, I cover five hundred square miles of that. I'm not even going to estimate the number of campers that are out there. And not to mention those that are just on vacant parcels or on residential parcels. And part of that reasoning is to for limiting the number of campers that are being stored on a parcel. Obviously, if it's on a dwelling unit. You want to keep your properties looking nice, especially for neighbors. Vacant property, and that seems to be an issue in some of our rural counties. People like to treat our vacant property as a storage facility. Further items from downstairs or from other places as well, too. This is hoping to address some of those issues that they are having, people who do campers. People over using the campers. I don't, I saw three or three more properties yesterday, and I had five or more junk campers on, so. Kind of help keep that light down as well, too.
Any questions for Ryan?
Make the motion to pass this present.
I support it. A resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote?
Jenny David? Yes. Frank Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbrook?
No.
Ron Vaughn?
No.
Brad Newbecker?
No.
Well, then, can I ask, so that we can go back to the planning commission, and what what are we working on here? What do you, what do you want us to work on?
Any suggestions, comments?
Also, this is already in, right? Already in the, in it.
I'll sit down, Craig, and write something up and give it to you guys on my thoughts.
Because really, I wish this was displayed like as the other ones where it was highlighted what the change was, because some of this stuff is not being changed.
Majority of it hasn't been changed.
Right.
But I don't think people were familiar with it, and now
Well.
that it's being talked about, they're reading it.
And the biggest part of this whole process is people just weren't aware of it.
Right.
Or they were aware of it and decided to. Unfortunately, I think some of the issues that we're having with some of the parcels from Lake Huron probably have deep restrictions that don't allow campers anyways, so. Most of you will know or understand that my biggest complaints come from the higher density areas, which are usually on the lakes or or village type areas. So anytime we put people closer together, you have some issues, so. With this particular one, I don't like, oh, it's been talked about constantly through this, but it is. There are thousands of homes. But campers, parcels next to them can can cause problems. Not only for the neighbors from news and noise, new noise and nuisance and potential gray water, black water contamination property. I have not seen it yet, but it could could potentially reduce some of these property. So any recommendations you have on them with the word mark? I know Brad.
Can you put this on the committee of the whole for next week? Make sure we're still talking.
We'll take those back to the planning commission and see what can be.
We got one more, Ryan. Huh?
Go ahead.
Resolution to approve zoning ordinance tax amendment zero one dash two two dash F. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator at their public hearing held on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. The Planning Commission recommended approval of a tax amendment to add section two dash one two subsection E to address non-traditional storage facilities. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that amendments to an adopted zoning ordinance must be approved by a majority vote of the members of the Board of Commissioners. The proposed resolution supports the Planning Commission recommendations to approve tax change.
Very quickly with this one, this is new, a new section for the ordinance, or actually, it's a new subsection to section two point one two for accessory building structures. As we spoke earlier, you know, the cost of building materials have gone up dramatically here in the past two years. And everything that's going on in the world today. And in that particular, with that being said, there are some other non-traditional units being used for storage, which the planning commission would would like to kind of get grip on this before it gets out of control. For instance, on one truck body, school buses, mobile home travel trailers or other items filled intended for other uses shall not be used as permanent accessory ones or accessory structures. Big thing we're seeing now, too, and you've probably seen them all over, not only in Oglema County, but in other places. Now, shipping containers. Shipping containers are a great way to store things. However, when you plop this metal giant eight foot by forty foot container in the middle of a residential neighborhood, it's not necessarily the most attractive thing in the world. So in that particular case, we're limiting those shipping containers to some of the larger, larger sized districts like the CD district, CD district, and CAG district, and also in the business districts. And also putting a little bit of language in there, if they're going to be in those residential districts, we want to, we want to make them blend in with. So they they need to be painted or cited in material that's typically used for. And that's more of an aesthetic thing. If you've seen those containers, they could have, they're all painted, they all have some sort of manufacturer on the side, so. Even painting that makes them.
How did this this come about?
In a lot of replies for them. It's also one of those items like the pre-built sheds that are kind of falling off, falling off the permit side as well, too. The individuals think since it's not a permanent structure, they don't, they don't need a permit. Which the the smaller shipping containers, which I believe are normally eight by twenty, those would not require a billing permit. However, the larger ones, eight by forty ones, they would, so. I've seen a few videos, I've seen some in some other areas, because shipping containers can, they can be stacked. They can be. can, they can be stacked, they can be, that's some very creative things, because property with shipping containers. And it's more of a aesthetic thing. We do have some language in the zoning ordinance for residential planets, some divisions for pole barns. About how they're supposed to look and fit in with the neighborhood as well, too. I think it's only, only light for these, these types of containers, too.
When you say other items, are you, are we talking, what size are we talking?
For the shipping containers?
A- any, any other items?
Number, number one.
Are we talking about storage units that you could buy at a retail center or anything like that?
Um, no, because those would be, those are generally, those are designed and intended for storage, you know, pole barn packages, packages. They even have polyplastic ones, those are things that are usually intended. We, we, things like this, I, covers up pretty good, trying to think off the top of my head, what else would be used that's not on here?
Take a ten by ten steel shed that you would buy.
But that, that, once again, that's something that's intended for use for, for as an accessory structure. Yeah, cars, mobile homes, things that are generally associated with storage or. Probably not saying that very well, but as an accessory structure, so. A lot of the ones that are promoted and packaged by, by, say, Menards or Home Depot, those are intended for that. Or specifically. Trying to think of one that would come to mind. Like the child's playhouse or something that was used for storage.
When you say travel trailer, are you talking about a storage trailer or a actual RV?
Um, like an actual RV. There are people that, and I've, I've seen them on some properties that might have ones that are jumped out or whatnot, that use them to store, store things in, so. It's more or less to limit those as well, too. The, the biggest one would be truck bodies, school buses. Mobile homes obviously could be used for, for storage, just the way that. Semi, semi trailer, permanent semi trailers that are just not attached to anything. Those types of items.
I don't know, this one makes me nervous. I, I don't know. Because I would rather see people's stuff stored, even if it doesn't look good cosmetically versus. Scattered all over the yard.
For the districts that we are not allowing, like the shipping containers in, are those smaller, smaller residential districts, your waterfront district, your R one district, R two, R three, those are generally properties that are. That actually requirements to create those parcels, for instance, waterfront in the R one district, minimum of twenty thousand square feet, which is under a half acre. Minimum of eighty feet. So we're talking about the smallest parcels in Old Mon County, planted subdivisions usually fall into that as well, too, waterfront property. Those areas just do not have, excuse me, a ton of room for storage as well, too. So and then you do have people posted closer together, so. Impacts on property values in those areas could be a potential problem as well, too.
Once again, we're looking at zoning across the whole county.
Right.
This includes the village of Prescott, the city of Rose City. Dense lakefront properties versus just. Sections owned by people, you know, you have to, we're trying to, trying to. One, one of the, one of the things of the zoning in this zoning plan is to be proactive and not reactive all the time. This is what happens, this is what's happened in the past. If you think back in the sixties and seventies when trailers, mobile homes started just flooding the area. All of a sudden, the townships and, and cities were just going after, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, we got to have some rules on these, you know? Well, once the rules got set, anybody that had, had it set there, it was grandfathered in now. So it's hard to set rules once you start taking off with something. You've got to be proactive. We're seeing these sheep, shipping containers. All of a sudden, they're on the market, people are putting them all over the place. You know, you got to be proactive.
One thing that I will add, these three districts, the residential districts, which is the CD, the CD district, and the ag district, that probably represents, my estimation, seventy five to eighty percent of, of the actual county, of what's still in the county. So really, we're only limiting those shipping containers and the smallest parcels and the smallest.
Think about it.
Where does that say that, I'm sorry? Where does that say that in this, as far as the, the size of the parcel? Did I, did I not read that?
No, the, the size of the parcels are not in there. I just know based with working with the ordinance, those, those are the three largest. CD district is a, is a minimum of five acres, if I'm not mistaken, CD district is a minimum of ten acres, and the ag district is a minimum of an acre. So every other zoning district, residential zoning district would be twenty thousand square feet or less, which would be less than here.
Shouldn't, shouldn't that be in here?
It is.
Where?
C, C, D, A, slash R, B.
Yeah, down in number two.
Two, B, three.
Those are listed there.
I see it, but, okay, those numbers don't mean anything.
This is part of the whole ordinance, so yeah, if, if you're looking at this in regards to the whole, those, those numbers will be under those particular districts.
So somebody can find those numbers.
Correct, correct. Each one of these districts has a list of permitted uses, special uses, and also has the minimum size regulations for that district as well, too.
The zoning, the zoning manual, planning manual for Old Mon County is what, a hundred and seventy pages long? I mean, it's every piece, every, every type of zoning has to be explained how minimum size to maximum size to setbacks to the, from the front yard to the side yards to the backyards.
In addition, we mentioned heights as well, too.
Everything.
Districts that aren't, here that are smaller districts, those also have the least amount of setbacks as well, too. So for instance, the difference between the CD district, the sites setback from a neighboring parcel is seventy five feet in the CD district, whereas in most residential districts, it's only five.
Any other questions for Ryan? We got a real call vote.
I need a motion first.
Yes. I thought we had, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion fast.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve resolution to equalization status painting and zoning. Oh, where did I go? Geez, okay.
Seven nine.
Totally lost.
Seven nine.
Sorry. It's not seven nine. Oh. What are we on, Tim? Oh, resolution to approve zoning ordinance text amendment zero one dash two two F. It is seven nine. Any further discussion? Real call vote.
Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Danny David.
Yes. Thanks, Ryan. Claims. It claims in the total of amount one hundred and ninety one thousand, forty four dollars and ninety four cents.
Well, it's my turn to do claims this next quarter, and I was right here yesterday, looked them over. And I'll make a motion that we pay the claims.
I will support that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, with support from Mr. Serbuk, thank you, Commissioner Serbuk for doing that for me.
Anytime, I told you that.
Anything stick out to you guys?
Uh, just some big numbers, like Circuit Court, it's our share to match Ross County County. So, you know, that was that appropriations, there's those, a large sum, but that's our second payment to the airport. Which the city pays also. Housing had a lot of activity in, in it. So. And so did transit have a lot of activity, but nothing gleaming, nothing, no smoking gun this time.
Commissioner Serbuk.
I have nothing to add.
Questions, commissioners?
Covered.
Real call vote. Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Danny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business, I don't believe we have any, correct? Pardon me? Item nine, administrators report.
Yeah, three items to share this morning, but first, I'm not sure if I've mentioned this already at committee of the whole last week, but next meeting, the whole meeting, I expect to have a security policy ready for your review. We had a security committee meeting early on Wednesday last week, and worked out some of the finer details that our policy would need to include to make sure that we're also compliant with the Supreme Court Administrative Order, I believe it's twenty nineteen dash one. So that, that will be before you, you'll have an opportunity to look at that, will also require approval of the court as well, but I don't think we're going to have any, any real differences on how we need to approach the security matter. We did talk at that committee meeting about the scanner that's out there, that's been the subject of whether or not we should have it, or if we should prepare the one we have and get a maintenance agreement or get a new one. We did hear from the security team, and they very much favor having something. I know that they've had it, they realize the benefit of having it, so that really isn't a question in their mind anymore, so probably committee of the whole, we talked about ARPA again, I think this was one of the items that was on there. There's also conversation at one point about emergency management, going for some federal dollars, independent of ARPA, to do that, but we can have that discussion, I think, now a little more candidly, because we've gotten the opinion back from those who use the machine. Second item, we'll have the unusual event of calling a closed session at the committee of the whole meeting, because they received a proposal from Teamsters Local two fourteen, our corrections unit, they proposed a memorandum of understanding concerning the life insurance benefit for the corrections officers. This is tantamount to collective bargaining, so we'll, we'll do a closed session, we'll talk about what's been proposed, and then be ready to vote at your next regular meeting as to whether this is something you're interested in pursuing. And finally, unusual event for me and honored to have been asked, our county treasurer recently received certification as a certified public funds investment manager, CPFIM. Karen had mentioned a couple of times at meetings that she was testing for this, and let's say top of your class, but real darn close to testing was completed. This organization is, and their certification is a testament to Karen's commitment to gain a greater understanding of knowledge, in knowledge, to better manage investments on behalf of Old Mon County. And earlier in this meeting, you approved an investment policy that I think is, you know, beginning to reap the benefits of, of this knowledge. This is something that I know Karen will take great pride in, I think the county can take great pride in her advancing her own education in this area, this is a five year certification. There are one hundred and twenty five of these generally, on average, that are awarded throughout the country, it seems like a large number, but when you realize that there are just over eighty nine thousand local governments in the country, it's kind of nice to see that Old Mon County actually has someone now with this credential behind them. So Karen, I have your plaque here, if you want to come on up there. Very nice, colorful plaque. Please send your wall pictures. Once again. That's my report.
Congratulations, Karen, great job, girl.
This is an accomplishment for myself, it is an accomplishment for the treasurer's office, and for this county as a whole, showing that the treasurer's office is dedicated for the growth and advancement for Old Mon County. Thank you.
That's it, Kim?
That's it.
Karen, you, you probably want to, you probably want to take a minute?
No.
You want to give your report, then come on up.
Switch it off now.
All right. Karen Piglowski, you're Old Mon County Treasurer. I wanted to tell you today that settlement is complete, we were finished on April fourth, which is a new deadline for completion of settlement, as far as I'm aware. We have three thousand eight hundred eighty seven parcels that returned to us as delinquent for collection, for a total of two million, six hundred eighty seven thousand, five hundred sixty seven dollars and three cents. We are down compared to last year by twelve thousand, six hundred forty seven dollars and forty eight cents, or point four six eight percent. If we compare that to two years ago, in two thousand nineteen, we are down two hundred thirty nine thousand, four hundred thirty three dollars and forty seven cents, or eight point one eight percent, which is amazing, considering the local economy, it's showing that we are growing, we are, people are spending their money wisely, paying their bills. Delinquent tax melons will be going out. I attended Edward's Township last night to talk about the land bank. And I'm going to mention to the board here again today. I want the land bank to grow, I want to be part of the changes in our community, and I need the funding to do that. I know that you were talking about ARPA money, you've already made one decision in the first round of evaluations, I want the land bank to be a priority in your next round for ARPA spending. There are areas of the community that are being left behind with light and abandonment, and I need your help to clean it up, so please, keep me on the forefront of your next discussion for ARPA spending. Thank you.
How many parcels, I'm sorry, how many parcels did you say are, are this year?
Three hundred eight, three thousand eight hundred eighty seven parcels were turned over as one point. That was as of March first, it's less than that now, because payments continue to come in.
Just thought everybody will pay, they just pay late.
Well, not everybody. Your land bank is being talked about at each one of the townships, they've received your letter and, and.
Great, yeah.
They are discussing.
Edward's Township last night, giving my spiel, I have not been invited to other townships yet, but it is important, we're growing in every area of the community on this trip, and these are some of the properties that are falling behind in other areas, land bank is. So please, I ask you for your support.
Agreed. Thank you, thank you. Clerk.
Um, Brett Gildner, Old Mon County Clerk, the only update I have is our new employees started, we're training, we're moving in the right direction. And this week, we get our new desks, and I can't tell you how excited I am personally to have a desk again. That's it. Sheriff.
Good morning.
Ryan.
Just have a couple of things. As you all are aware of, one of my deputies got into a car crash leaving work in his private vehicle heading home. Happy to report that he is on road, on road to recovery, he was injured by his seatbelt, basically. So we're hoping to get him back four to four weeks. Six weeks, probably most. He's got to go through some physical therapy, so we're hoping to get that individual back up. Our security checks are going real well with our night patrol, and I've been, I've been hitting these townships, and I've been hearing good positive things on, on sites of our vehicles. Road, so that's, that's positive news. And I just want to, I just want to encourage people out there that, that our doors are always open to our general public. For anybody that's involved in domestic assault, drug abuse, we encourage them individuals, if they're, if you're reaching out, come and give us a listen, we'll track them and right back, but there for our people. That's about all I have. Craig, that plaque that I, that I purchased, that looks very nice, thank you, I seen a picture of it, for the Deer Park.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, very nice, thank you. That's all I have, any questions? It's business as usual.
I saw your article in the paper, it was very good.
Thank you.
I like that. And, uh, but I'm looking at your report now, is the first half, the fiscal, the whole fiscal year, is the second half of fiscal year?
Yeah, the second, year to date, year to date is the best, oh, that totals, the totals are the total.
Of the month, right, but even on the bottom of the township.
Yeah.
Of the month, right. But even on the bottom of the township, that is fiscal year.
Yeah, that's fiscal year. Right hand side. Yep. So our, our, our fellows, our gal out here that's beating the street are, I'm, I'm impressed by their, their work ethics to doing real well. They too have an open door policy. Anytime that there's a problem, if they have any suggestions or any other direction that they think we should go, we are always there to listen. We've got a great undersheriff and we make things happen.
How are you handling with the absent deputy?
We're, we're thin right now. We're very, very thin. He reached out to MSP and they will, they will help when they can. It's a community effort of our local.
This is a night patrol officer, right? Isn't this a night patrol officer?
Yes, what I did.
So you had to put somebody in the car with them.
I moved up one of our individuals on days to cover that. So and then we reached out to the lieutenants down there at our local post. And they're more than willing to help us out. So we've got a very, very good working relationship with our, with our locals.
So we're still a hundred percent at night?
A hundred percent, absolutely. Thank you.
I, I, I had a question on this. And the, this is, this is a report from County Commissioners, March twenty twenty-two. This is required officers to a correction academy within one year of their hire date. We're currently working with somebody at Michigan Works. Attempt to secure funding for some of our staff to attend training out of the five officers I've been working with. Pursue to secure funding. One has been denied and one approved for funding, leaving three yet to be decided. So is there a time for, I guess, can you explain a little bit of that?
Oh, I wish Brian was here. He could, he can nail it for you, but he's still gonna have five, four to five people that need to be certified yet. So we're trying to make that happen.
Oh, for corrections? I was thinking deputy. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great week.
You too.
Happy Easter to everybody.
Do you have anything, Randy?
Oh, just like thank everyone for the backup. We'll probably use that during our studies up here. Pretty exciting to have a vehicle we can leave.
How long's it, how long's it been since the equalization department has had a new vehicle? Do you know?
Never.
Okay. Mr. Vitor, do you have anything?
We're just pointing away at the point of the APR, looking at the ordinance overall to change the better of the world. That, that process.
I did bring up last night at, actually at two of my meetings now, as far as you had mentioned, to our legal counsel, a blight ordinance that, that maybe each township could, could utilize, maybe tweak just a touch, that you were sending that to our legal team and I would, I would, I would report back to them with more information and they were pretty excited about that.
Yeah, yeah, there, there is. I know with, with Karen's blight, in the treasurer's office, with these properties coming back, a lot of them are, are full of John.
Right.
Blight, so in an effort to, in an effort to kind of stop that from happening, the townships, they're part, part of the blight ordinance. I heard from one township last week, who I believe didn't think their ordinance was enforceable, so they're wanting to. I've heard kind of that language from a couple of other townships as well, so. Kind of offering our, our help in that. Possibly getting a grant, blight ordinance that they could all use. The other issue I hear from the townships as well too is finding someone to enforce it.
Right.
If we are, we have everybody on the same page, then we might be able to find someone that'd be willing to do it, people are.
Right.
Create a position for somebody for the blight individual to do it. Blight is a tricky thing. I tell people best way to think about it is, you know, Rome wasn't built overnight. Didn't get this way overnight, so it is kind of a process that takes a little time, but must be started.
Thank you. Denise? Nothing? Any department heads or local officials on the phone? Mr. Stein, do you have anything? You're muted if you're talking. Any other department heads or local officials on the phone? Item eleven, manors on the floor. Do we have any, Tim? Item twelve, motions for adoption. And item thirteen, committee reports. Commissioner Serbuk.
I attended Mr. Bell's part two, one, hail. We did some fee increases. Which we ordered out previously, but because we didn't have a core physical present, we have to do several. Right now, any fee increases related to well drilling is on hold until they meet with the advisory committee that's made up of well drillers. So other than that, I haven't had anything because timely reasons.
Commissioner Scott?
I was able to do it a quarter in Edward's Township last night. Horton Township, their clerk, Juan Zetl, resigned and they will be, they voted to make your deputy clerk active until May fourth and then become clerk of May fourth. Can't think of her name. Howard is last.
Karen.
Karen, Karen Howard, right? And so that was the biggest topic there. Edwards, they set wages for their appointments. Their, of course, they have their own zoning, their zoning board, their zoning board of appeals, their border reviews, and their deputies. And then our county treasurer was there to give the thing about the land bank. It was a, it was a lengthy meeting, but they got a lot of stuff though.
Is that it? Is that it?
That's the last meeting, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mann?
Like Mark said, we, we went to the district health meeting, got that report. I was it, went to Cummings Township the other night and because Mr. Quack Bush had some surgery or something done, they canceled it until last night, which was the same night as Rose Township, went to Rose Township. Again, the big discussion was blight. I believe Mr. Vitor's, that was some of them from Rose, and they would like to see the, maybe something generally for the whole county, all the townships on blight, something written up and then, you know, maybe it takes some teeth and we could get some of this stuff cleaned up. Other than that, met with Hill Township, the other one, big one was Gypsy Moss. That's kind of on the agenda. So it's all ahead.
Commissioner Newbecker?
Well, nothing new to report with this time.
I've been busy. Village was last night, the Village of Prescott. Ryan had made a trip out there. They're very pleased that he made a trip out there. I think he issued three different tickets. They're having some significant issues with campers, specifically light issues. They do have Howie, who's, who's their blight officer. However, last night, they, they voted for some legal counsel. They did not have an attorney. So hopefully they're moving forward. They definitely have some significant issues over there with blight. There's gonna be a farmers market over there at the library starting this summer. Pretty excited about that. Logan Township, that was very, very well attended. That went better, much better. Rhodes was the biggest concern there. The roads out there are pretty, pretty rough. A road commissioner was out there, Clint Marshall was out there, took a lot of heat, did very well. Some of their roads, one was actually closed, Beach Road. They had some residents there, weren't able to deliver access into a lady. So it was pretty serious. But they were, Road Commission was out there the next day. They did agree to pay that thirty-three thousand dollars, I think, was the final cost on that. Gosh, cover, I was gonna say, too, that cover. So there was kind of a stalemate between the township over there and the road commission. They did agree to pay that back from, I think, twenty twenty. So hopefully that will improve, improve that relationship. Talked about the garbage a little bit, garbage pickup, which is also running over there. I think that was pretty much it. The Richland Township, they talked about the campground, roads, trying to get more electric in the campground. The campground's gonna be opening up. They did increase the rates of touch as well for electric hookup. Attended the Fair Board. They're, they're definitely feeling the financial strain. They were a little disappointed as far as our, our conversation with the ARPA funds. They had to unfortunately deny the gypsy moth spraying, which was seventy-two hundred dollars. Churchill had did it in the past, but Churchill wasn't able to do it this year related to cost. Fairwood's also doing some cleanup days. They had one this past Saturday and they have another one coming up, I think, the end of April. I'll keep you posted on that. Their entertainment has been posted as well. I believe it's Sawyer Brown. Security meeting, attended that as well. I attended by Zoom. Tim already briefly touched on that, the policy. They, they did the security. Gentleman was there and talked about the, the x-ray machine. They are huge advocate of that. That was also discussed, the commissioners voicing some concerns about basically everybody going through it and, and he voiced that he'd be willing to do that. If that's something that the commissioners wanted, correct?
Yes.
Talked about access to doors at that, that meeting as well, and you're supposedly implementing a policy there. So it's fair across the board and everybody knows who has access and who does not. What else? What else? That's security. That was pretty much it there. We touched everything else. Asked, I've had some constituents ask about the redistricting map to be posted. I talked to Brett about that and I talked to Mary. You said you were gonna talk to Tom and ask if that could be posted on the website fairly soon.
I have a couple of copies that I can send down.
Because on that, and I'm sure I'm giving the wrong answer, so I would much rather direct them to a website. Also, I reached out to Mary about grants writing and she sent me a link. I don't know if that's something we can post as well. Some, Churchill reached out to me and the village also talked about grant writing. I know there's a lot of grants out there, just people seem unfamiliar and uncomfortable with even approaching that task. So you had sent me a link, free online grant writing course. If that can be posted as well, I think the more people that would utilize that, the better. So I think that's it for me. Anything else, guys? Public comment is our last. This is any item, same rules applies. Or any public comment in the room? Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone? I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-two. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.